Let's call the July 19th Board of Education meeting to order. And Mary Bond, would you like to lay this in the pledge today?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Superintendent Dean, we've got a great presentation today. Why don't you pick some?
We do. We're excited to talk further about our solar project as we've been investigating the feasibility and advisability of bringing solar energy to our sites. We have a consultant with us today and also our attorney today and our director of operations, Steve King. Steve, I'll just turn it over to you to introduce our guests and we'll go from there.
Thank you. We're very excited to be here today. We've been doing a lot of research and background information. And so I'll just present Ian, our legal counsel, and Rob, Rob Pagardi from Art Consultant. And, you know, the district's worked with them for a number of years and actually my previous district, I've worked with Rob for about 17, 18 years. So it belongs, gets to have a saving energy. So go ahead.
Wonderful. Thanks, Ian.
Good morning. Ian Kowler from Tru Mall Firm.
Sorry. I would just say Ian's also a constituent, a parent as well of the district. So he's vested a couple of different ways, professionally and personally.
That's right. Yeah, no, so I got the green for Central, I got the blue for Northern. I'm an Eastern parent. My wife gave me all kinds of greens. So try my best.
You got my back.
That's right. Here we go. So why solar? Really quickly, everybody's heard in the news, there are tremendous federal incentives for solar. And we're bringing a pretty unique structure to the district that allows us to take advantage of those federal incentives. All of the federal incentives are geared around tax credits and tax values. Fortunately, as a public school district, general power school district in Michigan, you don't pay taxes. Unfortunately, that means you can't take advantage of tax credits and tax values. So we have to partner with a third-party private provider for the solar in order to get some of that value. And it's substantial, about half the construction cost at the end of the day. So what was developed about five years ago is a third-party solar structure. So the legal structure is a public-private partnership. The district will partner with Centrica Energy. They will, on the slide, design, install, finance, operate, and maintain the solar array for the life of the contract. So they're responsible for everything. You're not out a single dollar for construction costs, no design costs. You do have to pay legal fees and consulting fees, but we're going to make sure the district gets the benefit of the bargain that you guys strike. So the district becomes obligated to buy all the power produced by the array over the contract term. And we'll talk a little bit about a 20- or 25-year term as we get into some of the numbers. So what are the advantages of the solar? You get predictability, right? That contract's going to be for a stated price over the term of the 20 years. You get ease of implementation. We're going to be working with a company that's done hundreds of installs. They know what they're doing. They know how to properly install an array. And they want to have that array producing power that you guys are going to purchase. That's how they get paid back. So there's alignment of interest there. There's going to be savings. We're not going to do this unless it saves the district money. That's one of our core goals here. And we want the sustainability, right? So we're going to help meet district sustainability objectives, but we're going to do it at no cost to taxpayers. In fact, it should produce savings over the life of the contract. So we're going to get into, you know, we'll try to move along quickly, but we want you guys to, you know, be able to answer questions. So we'll leave some time at the end, but if you have questions, jump in at any point. I should have mentioned that right as we got started. So how did we get to where we are now? Back in May, we developed and issued an RFP to qualified developers of these solar projects. They came in, did a mandatory bid meeting, pre-bid meeting, they walked the roofs, they determined the best siding for the array. You'll see some samples of where they think the array will be located on the rooftops. We had a formal bid date. We opened bids, selected Centrica as the low bidder. And then now we're presenting you guys an update just to get you up to speed to where we are now. And then we'll talk about some next steps after Rob presents about some of the results of our proposals. So Rob, I'll sort of turn things over to you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we'll go on to just give you a little idea of what the system is going to look like here. So we had them provide some aerial view shots. They presented some of the blue area on the picture to the left and associated kind of how the layout's going to be. So these systems were sized typically with the structure of the utility rates and the net metering programs that were kind of put on hold. We structured these to size them so we use most of the power all the time. So what we're trying to prevent is you spending money on a system where the panels aren't producing or you're not using it, right? If you don't have a need for it, we don't want you to oversize it, but we don't want to undersize it either so you don't save enough money to pay for the process. So right now, there is some legislation that's out there that might allow for a little bit more net metering programs. And so we're going to size and look at the engineering over the next three months, I think, for the due diligence. And we're going to maybe size that system a little bigger if this net metering looks like it's going to go through, or we'll size it closer to what they bid. So the goal here is to produce enough power so you're using it all the time. So this is Central, right? Yeah, so this is Central. All right, and this is Eastern. And so at Eastern, this one is a little bit different in size, but it is going to produce about 1,1,760 kilowatt hours. So big roof. So at Eastern, we do have some roof. Lots of questions came up during the walkthrough on the roof. We've been working with Steve and his team, looking at the warranties that you have, talking a little bit on the bond and the bond dollars in the future that are going to be available. So I think what we're going to do is utilize the term we choose allows you to pull savings forward. It's about the starting rate of the power purchase agreement. And so we're going to be looking at these roofs for replacement. Steve's going to work on a possible bid that you guys can do that and get that done during the summer next year. So the goal for Eastern is to have it done by Thanksgiving or Christmas. And the other two facilities will try to get it done early in the summer.
So Rob, re-stating that again. You would replace the membrane on the roof before you put the array on. So you're putting it over top of a new membrane?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, it's just too costly to put these off the roofs if you know you need a repair. So we're putting a lot of time and energy into that. Steve did a good job pulling the information together for us. All the bidders analyzed it. You know, some of the bidders were concerned. They don't have a lot of roof experience, but Centrica has good roof experience, a partner. So they advise us what they thought we should do and look at the research of their roofing contractors and where you're at in the situation. I think the timing's going to be really good. So there is engineering to do yet in this process. Ian will talk a little bit about that.
So Central and Northern have had roofs for a while or are pretty current? I mean, are we going to run into that problem in the other schools that we're going to have to replace the roof and put all this equipment up there?
Not in a large scale, no. Yeah, so we have some sections that have long-term life on them. Some of the other sections we may address, we may decide to address. And if there's a couple of sections we might have to do some work on later, I don't think it's going to be a cost that's going to deter this program. We're going to make sure we look at it early. So, and then here's the last one. So you can see these range, you know, these are primary service accounts. They range typically around a megawatt or higher for electricity demand. And the size in here is pretty good as well. Okay? So here's some of the nuts and bolts for you. So what my team does, and I've been in the electric industry here in Michigan, we've been serving electric choice customers for 19 years. So we understand the cost, the current cost you're paying. So one of the beauties of these programs is there's no out-of-pocket cost for you. So on the left column there, that's the starting utility rate. So we have approximately two years' worth of history for the district and we've reviewed the current tariffs and we analyze what your cost per square hour is per building. So we look at that and then we structure these solar programs to make sure that you're saving some money. But truly, in this industry, there are a lot of people, there's 1,400 customers in Michigan already, that have put solar up at cost because they want renewables. The beauty of larger scale like this is we're able to work on pricing, work on proposals, get better pricing for large scale. But homeowners are paying more in many instances for the cost of solar. But if you look at these programs, we can structure them to pull the savings forward. You can see the second column, this is the starting of your power purchase agreement rate. You're at, if you choose the term, there's a term that you choose. And for the buildings that you choose, you can see you can get as low as 9.1 cents per kilowatt hour. And you're currently paying 11.43. You've got Northern at 0.089. But there are some advantages, and we're hoping to talk about that a little later. These systems, the panels themselves are warranted for 25 years. So we're going to look at the warranty life. We look at the term of the PPA. And I think we're kind of leaning towards the 20-year term because once you pay for that PPA, you will, there's some negotiations on the turnover of the product, but the savings jumps up to very large scale after the term of the power purchase. So some of these systems, the panels are guaranteed for 25 years. And maybe you'll have some maintenance or possible inverters, things that you'll have to do, but the savings will exceed the maintenance on this program, probably in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So we're looking at that option as the savings, see the total savings for 20 years jumps to four million dollars over 25 years. Yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I asked my questions before I forget them.
Sure.
So let's see. Remembered. Okay, the first one was you said homeowners will not be paying for this in many instances. And I was just kind of curious.
Oh.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. One of my questions was you had mentioned that homeowners would not be paying for this in many instances. And I just wondered what the instances are in which we would know that homeowners would pay.
Okay, so the utilities have programs. So those programs are renewable programs. And for instance, in DT, I know that right off the top of my head, is they pay about two to three cents extra per kilowatt hour for solar programs that the utilities run. So what I meant by that was is that with these larger-scale independent programs, you get a better rate. So you can see the numbers show that. So that's all.
Okay, which I mean makes sense. I would just think if somebody wanted to question, well, why are we doing solar? What is this? What is this cost that I could be, you know, aware of, be able to talk about that? The second thing I wanted to ask was that you had mentioned at first that this, you know, the maintenance of this would be done by, it's not executive energy, it starts with a C?
Cent.
Thank you. Okay, Centrica. And then you said, well, you may need to do some, or pay for some updates along the way of that 20-year span. And I just wondered if that's something that we're looking at would be above and beyond what would balance out with Centrica?
That's at the end of the term. That's the power purchase agreement, whether it would be 20 years or 25 years. So at the end of the term, you will own the system. So what we're looking at is we're making sure that the district will save money during the term of the power purchase agreement. And then if there's a benefit at the end, we think that the 20-year term might be in your best interest because the savings with the solar panels being guaranteed for 25 years, the possible other components of the program, most likely won't be that costly to, you know, upgrade at that time.
And that's a great question, right? So sort of two questions within that question, right? What happens during the life of the contract, right? If a panel dies, the equipment is basically panels.
Kids throws rocks.
Yep. It's totally on the developer to fix that issue. And they're going to want to fix it aggressively because they're selling you guys the power. The district only pays for power delivered to the meter. So they need those panels up and running in order to recoup their investment. So as soon as the system has a failure, and oftentimes the systems are smart systems, they'll connect back via cellular, Wi-Fi. They'll tell the developer, hey, panel 26 just went bad. A new panel will ship to the district. They don't be installed within days. So they're pretty aggressive about making sure that system's up and running so they can recoup their investment.
That makes perfect sense. And then I had one other follow-up question, and it was just that what would cause the damage to panels? And when does it become the responsibility of the district for the panel that was destroyed versus what naturally might occur?
Great question. So the follow-on to that is what happens after the life of the contract, right? So once you get to the 20-year, 25-year end term, the contract can't require the ownership to transfer to the district. Federal tax law just won't allow that, but it's very likely and almost accepted with the industry that Centrica is going to gift the panels to the district because it'd be almost more expensive to take them off the roof. The contract will say, you got to come pick up your panels and restore our roof to its normal condition and have some wear and tear. So they're not going to want to get up on the roof and go through all that headache. They're just going to say, ah, you take it. At that point, the system will still be about, and I'm not an engineer, I'm a lawyer, but all the engineers say about 80% efficient. But you'll own it free and clear. So at that point, you will take on operation and maintenance responsibility, but all the power generator will be free rather than at the, you know.
Right, I get that. I was just thinking about the 20 years prior. And I just can't help myself because I've seen students do incredible things over the course of my career, that if something a student were to do were to damage a solar panel is what I'm.
So the panels are very durable. That's a great point. And I've worked on a project where a developer wanted to locate a system right next to a middle school soccer field. And I said, listen, all you're doing right now is proposing to put a system out there where every single 12-year-old boy is just going to see a giant target.
Yeah. That's a particular clientele we've got here that are less, you know, maybe trustworthy.
Absolutely. No, the panels themselves are very durable. In fact, a lot of engineers will speak to the fact that they'll actually protect the roof membrane, right? If you have hail, which we get in West Michigan, right? A little bit of hail, that's going to hit the panels. It's not going to crack or hurt the panel at all. It'll actually protect your roof. So yeah, I know we have the problem at Eastern with the buzzards, right? The panels are super durable. They're, you can watch videos of people driving over them in trucks and tanks and stuff like that. They're very structurally sound. They do go bad, which is why they have the 25-year warranty so that they get flipped out. It's actually a great thing for the district during the 25-year period. A panel goes bad because a brand-new one's going to get shuttled out.
Right.
Just added to the life.
Yeah. They basically work like flat-screen TVs, right? Like everybody has one in their house that's like 10 years old. It's a 4K TV and we're all happy with it, even though if you went to buy one today, you'd be looking at an 8K TV, right? For the same price. So nobody wants the panel that's 10 years old, even though it works perfectly well.
All right, well, sounds good. I mean, I guess I just, yeah, reveal my ignorance as to how delicate solar panels might be.
No, no, it's a great question.
Yep. Okay, so this is the highlight of it. Again, there's a due diligence phase that we're going to have. Come in, we'll let Ian talk a little bit about that and how we get to that phase. We're excited.
I have a question, PPA. Are we prepaying that or is that just you just paying it as we go? Okay.
You pay for the kilowatt hours produced, and that allows the installer and their financier to collect their money back. And the financing's, anything's included and it's all wrapped in contracts.
I have a question that's sort of follow-on to that. I mean, is there some mechanism in the contract if prices, if the prices were getting way out of scale from this so that at this point, even at paying this, the provider is not making their money back, they're losing money? Like is there some mechanism where this could go higher?
No, yeah.
Yeah, so the contract is, will be for a stated rate. We have structured the transaction and the pricing will escalate at 3%. We've modeled the savings against consumers increasing their prices by 3%. The 20-year average, which Rob looked into of consumers' price increases over the last 20 years was 6%. So we're modeling at a much more conservative rate. And in theory, the price of consumers will increase higher than the district's rate. And according to your question, the system will work in parallel with the utility. So you're just going to have two meters at the building. The first meter will measure all the power received off the array. You'll pay Centrica for that power. And then any excess power you need, and what we do expect that you'll need, regular power will continue to come from consumers.
So we got that information. We need these power supply percentages, which is 3%. The total percentage increases 6%. But one of the things we do know that has been approved is the integrated resource plan for the utility. The consumer's energy is eight gigawatts of renewables are going to be built. So we have the 19 years of history that the rate has averaged an increase of 3%. And they're going to spend billions, if not billions, to build new generation. So the odds of their rates going down from where they're today are very slim and historic. We don't have the incentive. So we're very comfortable with this.
And Kristen, to your question, there is the potential, right? I mean, it is a risk to the district that in the next 20 years, some new technology is developed which dramatically drives down the price of power from consumers, right? You know, think of your science fiction technology, right? Cold fusion or something like that, right? And at that point, the transaction, the dynamics of the transaction could change for the district, right? You may have more, you would have cheaper power now under that scenario available for consumers, but you'd continue to pay the stated rate to Centrica for the life of the deal. Now, you know, you're probably happy at that point anyway because everybody's getting free energy, but.
Which in both terms, you're stepping back two years. You're going to start paying prices you were paying two years ago before the utility's rates were announced at 10%. So we're going to start there. It's going to take seven to eight years before you even get back to the rate where you were paying legitimately today. So you've got 13 years left on a 20-year power purchase agreement, and it can only go up to 3% acceleration. So it's pretty good opportunity. Probably not have the annual budget slot.
So the transaction does save the district money in every year of the life of the contract. So there are savings in the first year, continuing all the way through year 20 or 25. It just depends on how much the, if we select a 20-year term, you're paying a little bit more for the power and the savings are less in the beginning years, but then you get the substantial savings earlier at the end of the contract.
Talking about savings and kilowatts and maintenance even, you know, what, is there system technology that come with this so we can kind of see if there is maintenance, which will come out and keep track of that and top of it? From a technology standpoint, I'm sure we'll be able to see what it's producing, but at the same point, being able to, as we're starting to own it and understand it, really take ownership of it ourselves too. I mean, we talked a lot about our students being able to interact with it as well.
Yeah, that's our intention. Our intention is you'll have full access to it. You'll probably be able to stream it, Intranet, Intranet, which you got here for the district. But we will possibly be able to send it to business schools because we'll be able to utilize it. And I believe in the bid, Centrica offered an educational, a little educational assistance in there too as well.
They did offer that in the bid?
Yeah, I believe they did.
And nuts on here, obviously, is the theoretical benefit after year 25, where these panels continue to produce every single year and another, I mean, I don't know what you'd estimate the annual, you know, cost savings would be year after year at 8%, 75%, 70%?
And you can kind of see that number in the total energy savings line. So right under the table, it says total energy savings for 20 years, total energy savings for 25 years. It's actually modeling an equal 25-year period. So you can see in the 20-year period, you pay more for the power. Theoretically, the array would be donated in year 21. And that's why under that scenario, it's almost $2 million additional savings because you own the array at that point. It's assumed that.
But then also year 26, year 27, year 28. We continue to produce, we're still, and obviously just not showing for as long as the panels continue to be worth it for us to service and all that.
Absolutely. The one thing it doesn't reflect there is the operation and maintenance cost. So replacement of any panels that go bad would then become the district's responsibility. But, you know, you've got pretty substantial savings in those areas.
I, just off the top of my head, I think the numbers are about $248,000 here per year in additional savings, you know, minus five. So I think that's the most. So that's, yeah, and so if you had to replace, you know, my example was put $100,000 of that away per year and have that money for maintenance and repair it, and then take the additional 140 that's on children or whatever.
Then I have one additional question about the energy generation. I self-installed one of these in my house five years ago or so and then learned a lot in the process on a very micro scale compared to this, obviously. But that was with net metering. And so I can, you know, overproduce in the summer to make up for my underproduction in the winter, but we're not doing that, correct?
It's not proposed that way.
As of now?
Because as of now, the tariffs, but there is, I don't know, the bill, there's a bill on the table right now that's going to re-initiate net metering. And it could be very variable for this.
As it stands right now, are we way overproducing in May, June, July, except that we're going to pay you for energy that we're not going to use?
So in my analysis, it's about 12% maybe overproducing right now. But with the electrification of things, I've talked with the engineers and we've been discussing that 12% could be made up very quickly. I mean, I don't want to get into what you might add, but technology, screens, laptops, you know, iPads, electric [inaudible].
Yeah, well, right. But we do pay for every hour that we produce, not the hours that we use.
That's correct, yeah. So I'm going to continue. I hope this is a long-term partnership. I hope I do another 19 years with Steve and I can continue to help and, you know, manage energy throughout the [inaudible].
So consumers are very generous for residential solar, right? That's under 20 kilowatt hours. So we're talking about very small systems you would install in your house. You get much closer to dollar in, dollar out when you put power back on the grid. For the size of solar that we're looking at for each of the high school buildings at each meter, it's a pretty unfavorable rate. Yeah, so that's a great question. And obviously in Michigan, we get our highest production in the summer months. Those buildings are, although their air conditioning's running at those high schools, right? Their load is lower in the summer. So yeah, that crossover point is pretty critical. And, you know, we really want to be careful not to have the system be oversized because you're just not going to get, you know, the same kind of return for power put back on the grid.
So today is just a presentation on this for the board's understanding and all that. We're not bringing something here today for your vote or approval. We just wanted you to be up to speed and hear from our consultant and our attorney on all of this to understand where we are.
Sounds great. Dan, just really quickly, do you want me to cover some next steps?
Sure, that's fine.
Yeah, so as Dan pointed out, you know, we're going to go into a phase of the project now where we're going to negotiate a letter of intent that should be signed by your administration. The project will then enter a due diligence phase where the engineer comes in and does some more robust engineering just to make sure they're comfortable with the siding of the arrays and so forth. Then we will come back to you guys at your August meeting for consideration of definitive financing documents. So that'll be the time we return to you with the stated rate, pricing for termination of the contract, et cetera. And then we can expect to start construction in '23 in the spring and be concluded by winter. We'll try our best to push the developer to make sure it's done before school starts up in the fall.
Can I ask one final question? I'm sure you guys know this, you have the pulse on the legislation and things. If that legislation is happening, net metering comes back, and we build before it is law, is that something that we can access or do we need to be wary if that's going to happen in the spring of 2024? Are we going to steer yourself in the foot by doing this six months too early or?
Well, that, yeah, that's sort of a known unknown, right? You know that there are legislative changes around this. Fortunately, slash fortunately, you get the deal whenever you sign your interconnection agreement with consumers. So the district will sign an agreement with consumers. Say you're going on to a net metering program. As of that day, you get whatever the regulatory scheme is at that point in time. So you really would not be able to capture that benefit if there was a change. But you know this from the installation of your residential system, those rules have changed and become more favorable to the utilities. So you actually jumped in on the front end, like, we've got a much better deal. So yeah, it's just you get the benefit of whatever the statutory framework is on the [inaudible].
And we'd obviously be monitoring that. If there's legislation that's being considered at the time we're doing this, you know, we think it's going to go through. And it'd be better for us to wait a year or something to get much favorable, you know, more favorable if we do that, obviously.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you. Love hearing about these public, family, partner, community opportunities. So great update. So thanks Steve for spearheading this and Julie and the whole team. Wonderful. All right. Any other comments on that? Okay, all right. With that, we have a significant consent grouping here, so I think we need to move on to that. I'm going to need a motion to approve the consent grouping.
Make a motion to approve the consent group?
In a second on that. Okay. Superintendent Beam, are there some items here you would like to draw out for consideration first?
Yes, this is a little bit different consent grouping. At the organizational meeting here in July, we have a variety of things that we do one time a year. So for instance, we designate the depositories for district funds, we designate legal counsel we'll work with and the like. So those items are all in here. I would like to point out gifts to the district. We certainly thank those individuals and entities that help support education. Also in the consent grouping, we are bringing forth the bid to authorize the construction of our new transition center for our transition program students along with our administrative offices. Again, this is something that goes back to the community task force. We had, I think it was 2016, back when we had the task force, and then we specifically called out this particular project in the community-wide vote for our bond referendum in November of 2018 and got the community's approval then. We've taken a little bit more time, but I'm so happy that we're able to bring the transition center program and we're looking to add on to the site that we're on right here, the Fine Arts Center, Community and Aquatic Center site. That saves us a lot of money with site utilities, parking, all of those amenities that we already have here. Even things like using the loading dock in the back of the Fine Arts Center in case we need to load things in and bring it through the addition area into the administrative offices of Transition Center. That means we don't have to put a loading dock in that facility. So those are all things that are cost savings that we've brought along with this. And then also the intent is to continue to defer or bring forward savings to this project with the sale of the site that currently occupies the administrative offices as well. It's a site that's not large enough for a school site. So that was the thinking, but obviously the board at the time can figure out exactly what to do with that. That's not part of this. This is simply the bids to build the transition program center of administrative offices that'll be connected on with this building here. The battery backup program, so many of our desktop computers, I have one connected to mine, Val has one connected to hers, if the power goes out, there's a battery backup that kicks in right away so you don't lose what's on your screen right there at that moment. The batteries don't last forever. They, if there's no power, I think the batteries, maybe eight, 10 hours, something like that, you might get out of them. But it at least allows us the ability to continue operations in the event of power disruptions and we've been talking about electricity, but electricity disruptions seem to be a thing of life at any month of the year around here. So what this is doing is simply replacing the battery backup systems that we have throughout the district already. So we have many of them, they're just at the end of their useful life. Meal prices, we've been able to keep meal prices steady with the federal government heavily subsidizing meal prices the last couple of years. That won't be happening to the degree that it's happened the last two years, they still provide subsidies, but we know that costs are going up in many, many areas and this is a nickel, a five cent increase in our type A lunch prices on that. So just wanted to point that out in the consent grouping. On a percentage basis, we're still well below the inflation costs we're seeing in food. However, we do have fund balance in this area. So that's a way to sort of smooth out that price increase as we anticipate using some of that pricing, excuse me, some of the fund balance as well to absorb those increases in costs. Another item in the consent grouping is a resolution to place a renewal for the current recreation millage, so it's on the ballot. This recreation millage was first introduced in the district in 2004 and it was a 20-year term and we're bringing this forward now. It's just slightly early, but the November election has many things on the ballot so we can avoid the cost of doing this on our own. We'll know we'll have widespread participation from the community on this. This is a renewal. There's been a slight heavily rollback and I won't go all into heavy rollbacks, but essentially you have to roll back any tax levy when the cost of inflation of property values exceeds a set level in the state constitution. Then you have to roll back, I believe that's 5%, then you have to roll back the millage amount. So it's been a fractional reduction that we've seen because it's one mill only. So this is renewing and we're going with a shorter term proposal here instead of 20 years, 10 years. The problem with 20 years is people forget, that can be sort of a generation of a community household this year, oh yeah, we voted on the recreation millage and then people downsize, they leave, new people come in and like, what is this thing? You don't even, we've never heard of it before. So 10 years puts it more on a cycle where people can think about what that is in America or something like that and all of that.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, please.
Can you tell us what that is going to pay for?
Yes, absolutely. And I'm going to look to Julie here to help me out as well. So that pays for programming that is for our community, so it can be students as well, but it's outside of the K-12 instructional program and it's also outside of athletics as well. So we do have some community student recreation programs that we have on that. We have senior citizens programs on that. What else am I missing on that, Julie, as I'm thinking of that larger bucket of things as well?
So we've covered, like you said, the senior programming, we have adult programming, classes that occur of just a variety. It also has some youth programming, if you think of our after-school youth improvement programs that Nicole Weber who receives that programming offers, so they're scattered throughout our buildings. It's not very many of them are located here, it's just more of the adult programming. And this building is a great example, helps to cover this building and it helps to cover our aquatic programs. I think that is really maintaining the apparitions of the aquatic center.
Yep. So it doesn't cover repairs or renovations to buildings, it covers programming?
Right.
Right. Yep. So, yeah, do you have a specific example that you're thinking of or... No, I just, I just, there's some things that I just am curious what the timeline is for renovations on those buildings.
Right.
And I'll just also come out and say that the pool is one example. I've never heard that mentioned as something that's on a timeline or that's scheduled to be repaired. And so I, when you talk about aquatic programming, I know it's different than the actual building, but the building is where it already comes for those programs.
So, right, so the recreation millage helps pay for the program that we have there and reduce what otherwise are the true costs on that. It's not that there are no costs for people that use it because of this millage, but it helps to reduce those costs. And in terms of the facilities, you're right, we've addressed that through bonds. We've looked at the, in fact, have addressed issues with the aquatic center previously, but that is on our master plan going forward to look at that facility, long-term viability, what they call additional sheet of water, all of those type of things. That wouldn't come through this.
Okay, that's, I was just curious, what exactly does cover versus something else?
Sure, sure.
Just to clarify, I think everything in that enjoy learning, right? That's everything that's covered by the...
Well said, yep, yep. And then the last two things I just wanted to point out that are in the consent grouping are the employment of new professional staff and administrative staff. We are very excited about that. We know that there is a premium on finding educators as we are in a shortage. We're very pleased with the teacher candidates that we're bringing forward, the administrative candidates. We are seeing some shortages in the area of social workers. That's something that we're seeing across that profession, whether it's in hospital, healthcare, medical health, schools. So that's a new area that we, is cropping up quickly on that. But we are very pleased to bring all of these candidates forward in the consent. That's all I wanted to speak to in the consent grouping today.
All right. Board members, we've had some discussion here. Are there any items that are in the consent grouping that you would like to bring out for discussion or more Q and A?
The only question I have is on the battery backup. Do we have generators as well and, you know...
We do. We have generators at many of our schools. We don't have a backup, I'm thinking of like the administration building, we don't have a backup generator there at that building. So these are battery backup devices. I know there are on several of those desktop computers that are around.
They're just small, little ones.
Yeah, they're small, they're the size of a shoebox, I would say.
It's like brownout kind of thing?
Yep, yep, exactly, yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other items present? Do you want more question or discussion? All right, well, we had a motion, so I now think we are looking for a roll call vote, Madam Secretary. All right, I got you there. Mr. Michonne?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Dr. Fosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreier?
Yes.
Ms. Cavalli?
Yes.
And Mrs. Calabon?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, let's see, are we on informational items?
Informational items.
Yes, all right.
Yes, I have approved resignations from five of our staff members. This is a time of the year where we do see that. We know that some of these folks are relocating to other areas and moving on and we thank them for their service and best wishes with their new adventures. That's all for informational items.
Excellent. Okay, we have a couple topics here then in the discussion area about the board policy, some new ideas going forward in the coming years, so we could talk a little bit about that and then special meetings. So Superintendent Beam, why don't you kick us off on the board policy?
Around board policy, and this is not a new concept, but it's really to create a little bit larger working group that would help review any of the recommended changes, additions, deletions to our board policy. We have worked with board policy providers, service providers for years. When I came here, it was an outfit called Niola, that's an acronym, it doesn't matter what Niola stands for anymore. We now work with True Law Firm, that's one of the legal counsel firms that we work with as a school district and they specialize in education law and they have a policy service and we've been working with them. They will from time to time, based on new case law that comes down, new statutes that come down, federal, at the state level, based on their own experience and they can see this through the practice and working with hundreds of districts and saying, oh, we work with a district over on the east side of the state and we think this is a change you should bring to your policy. So they would put forth a recommended change. What we're looking at is to expand the review group. We have administrators that currently review, Val currently will sit on this and look at these pieces as well. We'd like to add a couple of board members to that as well. I'm trying to think, Mary, way back when did Maureen Fisher work with that, back in an earlier age?
Informally?
Informally, on that? So we've, what we've had is the review group administratively come forward and recommend the changes that, again, our policy service provider is doing, but we really haven't had board members there to sort of dig in there a little bit further on that. So I don't know, a representative from the finance committee and the curriculum committee, a couple of board members that could sit and work with that and then they could also speak to that. I remember Maureen saying, oh yeah, we look at this and the reason this change is coming through is because there was a federal court case that this outcome happened in two states over, but it's going to impact all K-12 districts, so we think this is a wise change.
So we already have the responsibility, when you bring forth, we've been getting a policy saying, okay, this is for the board to approve, we already have the responsibility to read it and approve. But this concept of kind of what Maureen did and what we talked about before was a way for a subset of us to dig in a little bit more and then bring forth at the committee meetings, saying, oh, this is something that we've worked through offline or in these other work groups in a formally informal way, is how I would describe it.
Right.
All right, so I guess with that, open it up for questions to Dan on how he's thinking about approaching this for the coming year. Dr. Fosson?
Yeah, so this would be sort of an informal gathering that comes up just from time to time. It wouldn't be like a standing committee that meets and has weekly, monthly reports.
Right, we don't have, just looking back at sort of the course of things and the pace of things, it is not a monthly occurrence that our policy providers, whoever they've been, would provide us with suggested updates at that pace. Certainly two or three times a year would not be unusual on that as they come in. It's rare, but it's, it does sometimes occur where a policy provider will come through and say, oh, something just happened and as soon as you can, you should adopt a new policy here. So there's something that comes in a little bit more urgent, that's more rare, I would say. It still would allow, and again, anyone can do this at any time, our policies are online and sometimes people will look through and read them and questions will come up with just policies that are there that no one's recommending to change, but people are asking for clarification. That's something we do with our administrators quite frequently to make sure that, especially new administrators, that they're aware of essentially the policies of the Board of Education are the statutes, if you will, of the district from the district's governing body. We also create, under those statutes, you could think of the comparison, say there's a federal law, oftentimes in the executive branch, you'll see the corresponding administrative rules that come through that at the federal level. We have a similar thing in our administrative regulations that are going to go into much greater detail. They cannot supersede what the policy says, but essentially what they do is they flesh out operationally, here's what the policy means at the elementary level, let's say, or on a school bus or those type of things. And so we have those administrative regulations and guidelines that come through as well. So it wouldn't prevent such a work group from saying, hey, we want to relook at something, even if our policy provider isn't putting in front of us any recommended change to that. We could still look at those things and ask questions and we do that from time to time.
Dan?
Oh, you have a question?
I have one more. I have one more. Could you speak a little bit, because I think there can be some misunderstanding in the community sometimes between board policy and policies that are set up by administration for things that are affecting in the schools. Could you maybe clarify that discussion?
Great, so the confusion comes in that we use the same word, policy, when we actually are referring to a practice, probably is a better thing. So right now, we have a practice and a school rule of during the instructional day, we don't want cell phones out unless the teacher is bringing them forward. We haven't brought that to the level of the board to pass a board policy on that, but people will colloquially refer to that as a cell phone policy. When really what it is, it is a practice that we've put in place under authority that the board provides broadly to say administrators need to make sure that schools are safe and orderly and well-run. There's a policy that speaks to that, if you will. So we're taking that authority and we are, you know, no running in the hallway, that would be another, we don't have a board policy that says that. And there might be, my nine-year-old daughter might say, oh yeah, they're running the hallway policy. It's not technically a board policy, it's a practice that we have. And so oftentimes, community members, parents, students, teachers, others may refer to something and describe it as a policy when it's not technically a board policy, it's a school rule, it's something that's in the handbook, those type of things.
I think that's helpful. Oh, Dr., I was getting ready to say, did Mrs. Cavalli, I... Go ahead. All right, Dan, I'm kind of curious, so you mentioned that the formal informal group will be meeting maybe three, four times a year, a couple people. To compare, contrast the benefit of having a different member of each committee attend each one of these things, because I think it would be a great benefit for everyone to experience that.
Sure.
So what would be the difference between having the same two people attend this each time versus switching it up to two different...
A rotating group?
Yep.
You could go either way. Having sat in these review groups, I do not want to preemptively increase your expectations as to how exciting they are.
Still learning opportunity.
Yes, but it is a learning opportunity, absolutely. And so, you know, it's certainly something where we could have a third person who's a rotating person... have a third person who's a rotating person that comes in and out, and a couple of people that, you know, the board could agree on at, say, an organizational meeting or something like that, could be representatives of our two standing committees, curriculum and finance, whatever you want to do in that regard. I just don't.
If we have a third person, would that not make it a formal formal?
No, it doesn't. No, it, 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 it does not. So it's, it's really that review process and then coming forward, which, again, a recommended change to a board policy is meaningless until the full Board of Education in a public meeting takes action on that recommended change. So this is really just digging into the weeds a little bit more. Imagine we had the solar presentation earlier today. Imagine if we had two or three of our board members sitting in on the meetings with our attorney, our director of operations, Julie Davis, our assistant superintendent for operations, and the consultant. You'd have an early head start a little bit on the, the description that was given here today. But we would still, just like the solar group did, come to the full board with all this information to explain all of that to all the board.
Senor Vaughn, any thoughts from the, the historical perspective on this topic?
From the old person. I don't dislike the idea of letting people rotate through if this is a new concept. So maybe when you guys come up with your first date, just put out there and say, would there be a curriculum member and a finance member that would be available for this meeting? Does that seem logical? And if somebody's just dying to get in there, then we would certainly have space for a third person. Superintendent, does that seem like acceptable practice?
Yes.
That would be my thought, but whatever y'all do, I just think it's great that we're putting our eye on the policy just to make sure we're too good. Thanks for asking.
I think it's a good group accountability piece that we're, it's not just an assumption or having the community just say, are they actually reviewing these? We actually are, but this will be something a little bit more.
I think this is in this area because we're talking about board policy, special meetings. There's a lot of conversation around, you know, school safety. There's been a lot of conversations around the shootings in Texas, and, you know, I know we are all vested board members. This is one area. We know what is going on. I would love to know more, though, what we're doing as a district. We are informed, but we get questions. And with school starting up in just six weeks, I will tell you, I'm getting more and more questions from all grade levels, I mean, through college, just because parents are nervous. So I do believe it's our best interest to create something around this as a board to be able to communicate what we're doing. And just putting it out there, not saying we have to do it today, but it's in this discussion area. It's a communication item that our community wants to know. And I, I get really upset about it because there, it's, we're moving targets in schools right now and just as well in our communities. It's absolutely, it's sad.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion on the board policy working group? Okay, we will make a note of Mrs. Gregory's topic to continue the discussion on school safety, and then talking about special meetings.
And this is, again, where we wanted to bring this forward at the organizational meeting. When I first came to the district many years ago, we had a routine practice of coming together for superintendent evaluation sessions throughout the year. That was beneficial for me, and I believe it was beneficial for members of the board at the time. I, as we look to return back to that this past year, we've had some people ask about, geez, it seems that you're doing evaluations more frequently. And really what they are is exactly what we do with our teachers and our administrative staff. We meet together, as I would call them, sort of interim evaluational meetings. We call them observations that we have, that principals and I engage in with the principals as well, principals with teachers. And so there's feedback that happens throughout the year, rather than just waiting to one point in time on one day of the year. So the idea here would be to set forth on the calendar the special meeting schedule, and also just let our community know this is a routine practice so they can see what's happening.
Excellent.
And it's a recommended practice, I would say, as well.
I'm very glad that you put that on as a discussion item because it did seem like, as we were putting them on the calendar, from, from my personal and professional expertise, and I think we could talk to Mrs. Anissa on this too, that doing a performance evaluation once a year is kind of old-fashioned, and having regular touch points on goals and progress and things like that is what a healthy organization does. And we've been doing this. It's just nice to be out of the COVID era and get back into some cadence of this. And then also, from a predictability perspective, it's nice for us to have some of these dates out on the calendar, so that is good news. So.
To speak further to that? Yeah. I went through getting everybody to speed on the evaluation, you know, practice we use. And we looked at the MASB as well. Both MASB and Marzano recommend that you have what I would call check-ins. You obviously have to do the state mandated evaluation in the summer by the end of the year, but to check in and see what kind of progress you've made and where you need support to further those goals and initiatives. So, good.
Excellent. Any other comments on conducting special board meetings primarily around that purpose? Okay, all right. Wow, superintendent's report. What do you want to share today?
Well, just that it's the summertime and it's been a busy summer. Lots of hiring and interviewing and the like that we are wrapping up, and a lot of excitement around that as well. A lot of construction happening. I think as I shared with the board in written communication, the buildings where we have intensive construction going on now, it's intensive, and that's by design. Again, there's no kids there, there are no staff there to speak of, and so you see strange sites like a bobcat in the middle of the hallway or something like that, and not the animal, but the machinery, and all sorts of dust and dirt. And if you were to look at those schools with intensive construction going on right now, you would have the same thought that everyone has. Oh, oh my goodness. When does school begin and will this get pulled back together in time? And that is, again, by design, and so we are moving along with all of that process and excitement as well. If you ever want to take a tour of those sites, let me know. We've got hard hats and wear some, some heavy shoes that you don't mind getting a little bit dirty, because we'll be slogging through dirt as well. So that's exciting stuff and fun things that are happening there as well. We are moving forward with our strategic planning work. I've worked with you, Suzanne, on, on this as well, and putting out letters to invite in really a couple of different working groups. The working groups, we want to keep under 20. It's hard to have a working group of 40 people where everyone can really weigh in and have conversation and dialogue. So the two groups, it's just simply designed to have more people involved in the process, but the two groups aren't going to be doing vastly different things. So actually with our facilitator, he'll lead them through very similar, if not identical, sort of questions and activities as we go. And that's designed to begin here in August, which is really looking at a, a deeper dive into where we currently are at. What's our, sort of our current state, if you will, and then that sets us up for what's our desired state? Where do we want to go? Where do we see the organization wanting to go? Where do we want to go as a community? What are things that we really love that wherever we go, we want to make sure is intact as we go along? And what are things that we would maybe say, this thing that we've had around for a while, we'd love to see it evolve or change in some way. So it's being specific about those things. And then as we've talked more with the consultant to understand processes along the way, there is a check-in with the whole community, and we anticipate that being something that could happen here in October, I think, as we were looking at that, October-ish. I'll just put the ish on the end of that, where we might meet in the room next door here and talk about, here's some things we've been talking about. Here's some ideas and proposed future state. Community, what, tell us what you think, and even some surveys that go out to community and staff as well on those pieces. So that's the, and then taking that back after we get sort of verification and confirmation of those things, and then putting together really the work for all of us as administrators, what's the work plan? What's the work plan look like to achieve that desired future state? And then really looking at the work plan and saying, what are the milestones along with that that we want to see? If you're at 25% of the way there, 50% of the way there, 75% of the way there. And, and that's really a process of coming back and reporting to this body here as to how we're doing in all of the strategy areas and the unemployment plans and that as well. So that's a very brief summary. Did I miss critically important parts?
No, I think that's good. And I think we, we have our retreat next week to dig into some of that a little bit, to sort of set the stage from, from our view of this and getting updates. So really, this doesn't replace, this lays over top of all of the work that happens in the district of district goals, school goals, all of the, the school improvement plans, things that have been happening. But the thing that I'm excited about actually is that community engagement piece. And I say community broadly, like community parents, but really community throughout the stakeholders within the organization, because I think for you to have your winning aspiration, where do you want to go? You have to have people bought in. So you're the, you've been our chief vision caster, which is great, and we're the super cheerleaders, but to have people on board in an organization, it's going to be an exciting time. So.
Absolutely.
Looking forward to it.
Just the last thing I have in my report, you know, we've been looking at a variety of data as we close out the year and the like, and some good news things that we'll be sharing out with our community. You know, financially, this board approved the lowest tax rate we've seen since 1999, so almost 25 years. So that's a good news piece on that. We've looked at our reading and math achievement, really important things, foundational skills. We're in the top 2% of districts in the state for performance in grades third through eight, that's where we pass on the M step, and reading and math. So we're always looking to improve on that, but I, I think that's something that speaks to the hard work that our teachers and parents and certainly students have put in on that. And I think as we've shared before, our graduation rate, that's where we're, our goal is for students to graduate from forest hills and then continue on with their learning. The highest rate we've ever had as a district is what we see in our most current data. So that's another point of celebration. We're still digging into the data and looking at more and more pieces, and we expect that we'll have more good news things to share, as well as more targets for us to bring forward to say the strategic planning process, to say, we're here and we really want to be here, whether that's on an academic achievement piece or what kids do after they leave us, whatever it may be on those pieces. So sometimes data can be, again, not exciting, kind of dry, but I, I thought those were some good celebration points as well.
I think they're great, and I think we should celebrate them more.
We will. Yeah, we've got.
No, it makes me smile. Those are really great numbers, and I don't think everyone knows that, that information.
And we're going to get that out. Exactly. We'll, we'll hit that more than once. We've already talked about that of trying to make sure we, we spread the word in, in a few different ways as well. Yeah. Thank you. That's my report.
All right. Thank you. That is, I always like an upbeat report in the middle of the summer, so this is the time for us to rejuvenate. With that, we will move into board communication. Is there anything that board members would like to share with the group while we're all here together?
I can share a little bit. There's not a lot of foundation news right now, only because we didn't have meetings since June, but here is the scavenger hunt coming up, August 19, I believe it is, Friday afternoon in downtown Eda, Legacy Park. And that is a full district activity. A lot of elementary PTOs will be there, but also athletic teams come and really kind of get the word out about their team. And it was so well-attended last year, so I'm assuming this year will be bigger. So that's kind of what they have right now. Go ahead.
Excellent. Mrs. Vaughn?
I'm going to start my cheerleading. The MASB Annual Conference is October 22nd and 23rd. And now that we've seen what a gift that is, I'm going to start your pressuring you off to try.
Is it live or is it virtual?
It is at Travel City.
Okay.
So we have some logistics, but I will be happy to be the travel agent. Just talk through that with your schedules.
Or Val. I think Val is the travel agent.
Good, fine.
Mary can drive.
October 22nd and 23rd. Mary has the power. That would work, but yeah. Okay. So we'd love it if we could show up there and see what it's about and commiserate with our peers. It'd be great.
That makes me laugh a lot.
And September, and September 2nd is a deadline by which we can receive a discount, so if we can kind of share.
And you can kind of like pop in and out of different breakout sessions.
Yes, yeah. Oh, yeah.
So I will put in, this is a reminder to me via Val, we'll put a reminder in the Friday update this time, and then again, beginning of August, for people to communicate with Val on some of those logistics pieces. And it sounds like what we're putting in the minutes is Mary's driving. I don't know, something like that. All right. Any other board communications? All right. Well, then I guess we will see if there are any public comments, friends? No public comments? Okay. All right. Well, with that, I think I need a motion for us to move into closed session to work on the superintendent's evaluation. Do you have a second to work? Okay, we are in closed session. Do, I think we just move in, don't we, Val?
Oh, all in favor?
We are in closed session. All right, are we ready?
Yes.
There we go. Okay, so I can just bring us back. Here we go. All right, ready? We're going to tie more back in. All right, we are back in open session. I think we just have a couple things before we wrap up today. I am looking for a motion regarding the extension and negotiation of our superintendent Bean's contract.
I will extend Superintendent Bean's contract by year and then make Mrs. Taylor and our president to negotiate for terms of this ongoing contract.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Is, do I, all in favor of that?
All in.
Okay. All right. Any other items that we need to cover while we are here today? If there are none, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I will motion to adjourn.
And do we have a second to work? All right, we are adjourned.